Madam Clerk.
Oh God almighty, wisdom and justice. Laws enacted and judgment decreed. Assist us, we beseech thee, that this city council may be conducted in righteousness and be eminently useful to thy people over whom we preside. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk.
Councilors Williams.
Here.
Morrigan.
Present.
West.
Present.
Jacobs.
Present.
Mayor Kirkland.
Present. Move for the approval of minutes?
So moved.
I second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilors Williams.
Yes.
Morrigan.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes. We now open up the microphone for public comments on the agenda items only. If you'd like to have a public comment on the agenda. Address and your comments. Hearing is saying none, Madam Clerk.
Resolution, whereas the following individuals have requested a handicap parking zone. Number one, Andrea Campbell Mobley, 716 Barclay Street, Chester, PA, 19013. Number two, Gloria Daniels, 1111 Butler Street, Chester, PA, 19013. Number three, Sherry Shank, 610 Norris Street, Chester, PA, 19013. Number four, Willie York, 829 Elsner Place, Chester, PA, 19013. Number five, Jessie Mae Lawler, 1031 Curlin Street, Chester, PA, 19013. And number six, John Paragon, 2420 Upland Street, Chester, PA, 19013. Whereas after a thorough investigation by the Department of Public Works, it has been determined the aforementioned individuals have met all of the required criteria and have a need for said handicap parking zone. Now therefore, the council of the city of Chester does resolve that it does hereby authorize the proper city officials to install a handicap parking zone in the 700 block of Barclay Street, in the 1100 block of Butler Street, in the 600 block of Norris Street, in the 800 block of Elsner Place, in the 1,000 block of Curlin Street, and in the 2,400 block of Upland Street in the city of Chester.
So moved.
I second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilors Williams.
Yes.
Morrigan.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Resolution, the council of the city of Chester does resolve that in accordance with section 503.06 C and D are the codified ordinances of the city of Chester, the mayor of the city of Chester does hereby authorize the proper city official or officials to erect stop sign or signs at the following intersection in the city of Chester. Number one, West Fourth and Rainey Streets. And number two, West Fourth and Yarnell Streets. Further, that it does hereby authorize the proper city officials to install four-way stop sign and to notify the public of said stop signs.
So moved.
I second.
Are there any questions?
I don't have a question, Mayor, but I just want to note that this effort of the stop signs at Fourth and Rainey and Fourth and Yarnell is as a result of a number of incidents that we've had at those intersections and at the request of the residents who did not feel safe.
Thank you, Councilwoman, duly noted. Any other, any further questions, comments? Madam Clerk.
Councilors Williams.
Yes.
Morrigan.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Resolution, the council of the city of Chester does resolve that it does hereby authorize the commemorative roadway naming of Lincoln Street from West 11th Street north to end to Islamic Way. Further, that it does hereby authorize the proper city officials to install the appropriate signage and notify the public of said sign.
So moved.
Second.
Are there any questions? I just wanted to make a comment on this. And this is an effort that was put forth by Iman Farid Rasool and his membership. This is basically the property that they, that their mosque lies upon, and we're glad to be a part of that experience. Any other questions or comments?
Congratulations, I think it's a wonderful, wonderful thing to do.
Madam Clerk.
Councilors Williams.
Yes.
Morrigan.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Resolution, the council of the city of Chester does resolve that it does hereby authorize testing to be given by the Civil Service Board to all eligible candidates for the position of fire cadet, Bureau of Fire, Department of Public Safety. Further, that it does hereby authorize the city clerk to advertise for testing to establish a civil service list for the position.
So moved.
Second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilors Williams.
Yes.
Morrigan.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Resolution, the council of the city of Chester does resolve that it does hereby authorize the Department of Accounts and Finance to refund the stated amounts to Wahih Rahim, which represents a refund for the overpayment West Third Street, Chester, PA, 19013, in the amount of $660, and 200 West Seventh Street, Chester, PA, 19013, in the amount of $220.
So moved.
I second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilors Williams.
Yes.
Morrigan.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Resolution, the council of the city of Chester does resolve that it does approve and order payment of a series of bills and refunds as prepared by the Department of Accounts and Finance and as shown on expenditure approval list dated October 25, 2021, attached hereto and made a part hereof, subject to approval from the Department of Accounts and Finance.
So moved.
Second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilors Williams.
Yes.
Morrigan.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
But I remember we got to move on the bids.
After we opened them, right? Right. Okay.
We had bid openings. They are for the Berry Bridge Park Pavilion and Park Upgrades. First company. First company is Donata Spaventa and Sons Incorporated. Address is 4258 through 88 McAllister Street, Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, 19124. They do have a 10% bid bond. Their bid amount is $147,364. Next company is Kane Communications LLC. Address is 572 Whitehead Road, Suite 201 in Trenton, New Jersey, 08619. They have a 10% bid bond. Their bid amount is $113,758.
Madam Clerk, do you have 10%?
10, that's perfect, 10% bid bond.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next company, LJ Pay Oella Construction Incorporated, 278 Bridgewater Road, Brookhaven, PA, 19015. They have a 10% bid bond. Their bid amount is $158,864. Next company, Midwest Construction, 2408 Township Line Road in Havertown, PA, 19083. Bid amount, $174,000. 10% bid bond. Next company, Moore Construction, 139 Schoolhouse Lane, Glen Mills, PA, 19342. Their bid amount, $126,425. 10% bid bond. Last company, Premier Concrete Incorporated, 2327 West Chester Pike, Brewmore, PA, 19008. Their bid amount is $188,100. They also have a 10% bid bond.
Madam Clerk.
Yes.
I'm sorry, would you please give me the bid amount for Midwest Construction again?
Midwest?
Please.
Not a problem.
$174,000. 174.
She's good?
I have it.
All right. They are all the bid openings I have, Your Honor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Madam Clerk, do we need to have a motion to approve these bid openings?
Yes, I do.
Second.
Are there any quest, any questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilors Williams.
Yes.
Morrigan.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
We also have a citation this morning, Your Honor. City of Chester's citation, "Councilwoman Elizabeth Williams' Public Service." Whereas the residents and business owners of Delaware County has experienced financial hardship due to the COVID-19 pandemic through the loss of income and the shutdown of businesses. And whereas the Delco Era was launched by Delaware County officially in March 2021 in response to the financial crisis. Delco Era is the Delaware County Emergency Rental Assistance Grant Program. And whereas the original federal program, Delco Era I, provides over $37 million to Delaware County residents to assist with past due rent and outstanding utility bills. A supplemented program, Delco Era II, provides an additional $29.5 million to spend in 2021 and 2022 for the same purposes. And whereas local leaders helped to make the residents aware of the program and assisted with weekly intake sessions that allowed the residents to obtain in-person assistance with the Emergency Rental Assistance Application. Whereas the intake sessions bridged the digital divide in the community, ensuring access to the internet to apply for the program and aid with the application process. And whereas Councilwoman Elizabeth Williams has assisted over 600 residents. Let me repeat. Councilwoman Elizabeth Williams has assisted over 600 residents in receiving financial assistance due to her efforts, dedication, and compassion to residents in the community. Now therefore, I, Mayor Thaddeus Kirkland, and the council members of the city of Chester do hereby commend Councilwoman Elizabeth Williams for her service and commitment to the residents of the city of Chester.
Before, before we ask the Councilwoman to say, get some comments, I do want to say this. Councilwoman Williams on all of our communities, especially those who are renters and homeowners and who have lost their opportunity for employment due to this COVID-19 dilemma. Councilwoman Williams has personally immersed herself into helping the residents in the city of Chester. I've watched her kind of run ragged back and forth every Wednesday, downstairs guiding, pushing, fighting for the residents so that they might be, be able to receive some type of financial assistance when it comes to paying their rent or other utility bills. So I want to thank you, Councilwoman, on behalf of myself and council. We wanted to thank you. You snuck out the Delaware County Council and received this, this recognition without telling us. So we didn't tell you about this one. Paybacks.
I'd like to say good morning.
Good morning.
I find it not robbery for the work that I do for my citizens here in the city of Chester and Delaware County. I just, once it came to me, I felt I didn't have any other choice but to put something in place for everybody here in Chester and in Delaware County because now they're sending us people from all over. So, so I was like, oh my, I didn't know why I was that important. So I just give, give the glory to God that I could help people in the city of Chester and in Delaware County. And I'd like to say thank you, Mayor and council, because I, I just, I took my, my son and my daughter with me and I didn't want to tell you all. I thought it would be a surprise.
It was.
But thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you. Good work, Councilwoman.
Thank you for all your hard work, Councilwoman Williams.
But my numbers are off, y'all. It's 700. I said quotas. So I have a secret quota. And when I hit that quota, I'll let y'all know. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Before we go into public comment, we'll have our presentation by Commissioner Rigby concerning our COVID efforts, COVID vaccination efforts. Commissioner?
Good morning.
Morning.
I'm filling in for our health coordinator, Ms. Rosetta Carter, just today. So hopefully you don't have any questions. At least for the city of Chester, we have 3,970 positive COVID cases to date, October 25. And we are at 14,899 with at least one shot. And that's 50% fully vaccinated. We are at 13,054, which is 43% of the community. And partially covered is 1,845. And from her graphs here, most of our seniors are vaccinated and we are still trying to appeal to our young folks in the community. And that's where we're kind of lacking. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. And we want to thank the Health Department under the direction of Ms. Carter and yourself and others for all the hard work that they continue to do. Please, please, please get vaccinated. It makes you sa, safe, makes us safe, it makes our community safer. At this time, we're going to open up the microphone for public comment. I'm gonna do that again. Open up the microphone for public comment. If you have a public comment, we ask that you go to the microphone, state your name, your address, and your comments.
Hi, my name is Harry Crawford. I live at 3315 Carter Lane. First comment is that I was here to ask the mayor, had they interned, they decided to, to come into our area to, to start policing the area.
Yes, they have. And matter of fact, Mr. Crawford, I was there the next day after you came at the last meeting. And I, I've personally been coming through there. I make sure, when I, I drop my granddaughter off at school there. And so I, I personally come through there and also personally come through there on the evenings. But I do know that the commissioner has put together a detail for that area.
But the public does not see the, their detail. We need, we, we need the police to be seen, not hidden.
I don't think they're hidden. I think maybe sometime they're just missed.
Okay. Next is for Ms. West, oh no, also with you. The, the, the abandoned car telephone number, it's, it says on there that leave your message and they will call you back. And in over five years, I have never received back a phone call. I just called again yesterday and it says, it has a line is full and, and you can't leave the message.
Mr. Crawford, if there's an abandoned car issue, please feel free to call my office. You can, Dr. Miss Denise Stanback, she will forward that information to me and I will make sure I get the, your, the abandoned car that is identified to our property department.
Okay. Ms. West, have you had a chance to, anytime I come, come up into the area? Have you had a chance to come up to the area in regards to the, the items I, I gave you on my last city council meeting? Of the intern hold zone, intern Carter Lane, that's the hold zone, intern 15th Street? The not being able to actually make any turn, left hand turn on, on, on turn, Keystone and, and 15th Street? Also, the, the people o, over there are telling me that they have a problem parking in front of their own house because of the lines that they're dealing with. Michael, back here.
Mr. Rob, will you give it to Crawford after the council meeting and, and find out exactly? And then we'll go up.
They have here as far as the left.
Yes.
Yeah, Pendott did a project there to address some of the safety concerns with people coming off of the bridge. And part of that project, they restriked the roadway. And then the striping had, was moved a little bit closer and eliminated on about maybe four or five of the houses. I've been coordinating, coordinating with Pendott to try to get the striping shifted over. And those talks are in progress.
Okay, so it has not been resolved yet, but the, but you are.
And this work actually happened about 18 months, the two years, it was before COVID-19 pandemic.
Yes.
Yeah, it's been about two years.
But Pendott is the one that has to make.
Pendott Road, yeah, and I've been working with Pendott.
Resolve the issue.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, but like I said, it's, it's about a two-year-old project.
But, but so you said you were talking to someone, Mike, at Pendott?
Yeah, 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 we've been working with him, trying to adjust the striping, yeah.
Okay. And you haven't heard back from him?
We've been, it's been ongoing. Like we've been working on numerous projects. It's one of the projects that we work on with Pendott.
Okay, can we reach out to them to find out how high up on the list it is?
Yeah, sure.
Still a work in progress.
Still a work in progress.
Right, and it's, it's, it's not.
Two years.
But Pendott's call.
Okay. Last, as, just as one example of the parking, as I interned, saw a, a young lady park on, on Carter Lane, grab all of her intern bags to actually walk up the alley as eight houses because there was no parking on 15th or Towne Chapel Line Road for, as for to park. It's been a ongoing problem, but it seems like nobody wants to actually grab the ball.
Grab the ball?
Ball, ball. Take care of the problem, in, in other words.
It's not that we don't want to take care of it.
It's that it takes time.
It does.
Yep, and that's, as you just had mentioned, it has been almost two years that I've, that we've been dealing with this.
But then Pendott has other projects that we're dealing with. And then we submit our, our concerns, our issues, okay? And then they put us on a list, a to-do list.
Okay.
You know, and, and it's out of our control. Now, Mike, Mr. Galante can, you know, call, make a phone call today to see how soon, you know, if it's moved up on them.
Yeah, and just to, just to reiterate, we haven't had a complaint about the striping out on the roadway until just recently. So we've been working with Pendott, you know, because we thought it might have been a problem out there. But this is just recent, getting complaints from the residents. So I'll take that over to Pendott. And then like I said, it's been, it's been out there for two years, the striping.
Do you, do, do you remember our conversation?
I remember we had a conversation when it first happened. And COVID-19 came, kind of slowed everything down. Nope, Pendott wasn't in the office. I'll, I'll reignite the conversation with Pendott.
Okay.
So, thanks.
All right. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm sorry for the time involved, but we'll, we'll, we'll get a phone call out today.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
And Mr. Carter, let me give you Mrs....
Crawford.
I'm sorry, Crawford. Let me give you Mrs. Stanback's direct line.
Okay.
So if you deal with any abandoned vehicles, we can jump right on it. That number is six ten four four seven 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 two three.
And her name again?
Mrs. Denise Stanback.
Okay.
And if you would give us the area and description of the vehicle, we'll be able to respond appropriately.
Okay, are they going to look at their recording for the abandoned vehicles?
Are they going to look at the recording?
Yes.
Sure, sure. I'll talk to the Commissioner.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I failed to, I don't know if you guys brought it up. Ms. Carter also has a partnership with Mount Pleasant Baptist Church for a COVID vaccine and Booster Shock Clinic tomorrow here in the community room at City Hall from nine AM till two PM. And that's on our website.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment?
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Nadine Williams-Dill. I'm here on behalf of the families that live on, live in the twenty-five and twenty-six hundred block of Sandaland Street. A recovery house being put at the end of the twenty-five hundred block of Sandaland Street.
You said it's a recovery house?
Yes.
They've already started the process?
Well, they are fixing the house up. It's a three-bedroom house at the end of twenty-five hundred block.
And what's that address again?
I'm quite sure it's twenty-five forty-three.
Ms. Nadine?
Yes, ma'am.
Williams, did you say another name after Williams?
Dill.
That's what I thought, I just wanted to make sure, thank you.
We will, we will contact our planning department and also our inspectors under...
Also public sector. I mean, we didn't, of course, I've heard about it. We'll check into it and see if they've got everything they're supposed to have in terms of permits.
So I'll get back to talk to you.
Whether they've been approved also through the zone.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing it to our attention. Is there, are there any other public comments?
Good morning, good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Wesley Spence. I have an issue. My son died four years ago in Chester, got ran over by a person that had a...
Excuse me, Mr. Spence, I need your address.
Wilmington, Delaware. My son got killed in Chester on that bridge right there. Mr. Mayor, we had the conversation a while back. I've been trying to see you since. And you said you would help me, remember?
He said I'll do everything I can in my power.
Yes, sir. So I've been trying to get in touch with you since then and haven't had any opportunity up to now. I just happened to walk in here and boom, everybody's in here that need to hear this. I started my Moyo on that bridge, July the fourteenth this year. For three years, it was dormant. I was numb, I was devastated by the fact that my son got killed on that bridge, got ran over, and they claimed it was an accident. The film shows at the post office that it wasn't an accident. The guy in the passenger seat jumps in the backseat and said he didn't see nothing. They leave the scene at the accident. This young man had four years of parole violations and everything, suspended license, the whole nine. Didn't even get arrested. After that, in March, my son got killed in March, the eleventh, two thousand seventeen. September, we go to trial, but July the fourteenth, I found out he had another accident and hit somebody else. So I believe the police is covering it up and keeping this man from getting the time he deserved for killing my son with that vehicle. He got leaving the scene of the accident and driving with suspended license. The vehicle wasn't even involved in the case. And it was a joke, the whole trial was a joke. I met the head DA and all of those people and they pretty much brushed it off as if this couldn't happen in another borough, like, you know what I mean? I think it was a joke of some sort. To me, it is a joke because I still have that no closure. I still got no kind of, even the victim conversation people didn't help us. And I'm not leaving until I get the help I deserve for my family. Because this is not right.
Mr. Spence, first of all, let me say again, my condolences go out for your loss. I can't say I know how you feel because I don't. I've never experienced that and hope to never have to. Currently, there is a new DA in place. And I've been having, I will be having conversations with the new DA concerning this case.
I went there yesterday, by the way, to meet him.
Okay.
And I'm gonna go again and introduce myself because I think the detective that wrote this case up is involved as well. It's a conflict of interest, a few things going on.
Well, that's why if those thoughts or feelings are expressed, that's why we turn it over to the District Attorney's Office.
Okay.
So I will be having conversations with Mr. Stolzheimer. I'll put a call in him today and asking if he is aware of the case and trying to see what they, what their investigations have led to.
And one more thing. When they did, when they were, they did the preliminary without us. They were about to do the hearing without us. I called another lawyer and he tells me the case is in ten days. I'm like, are you serious? So I had to call him, guess what? They did the trial without us, as if he didn't have any family. And I'm really mad about that, I'm upset. And I've been crying for four years because that was my baby, yo. And to get rid of it by a truck, he was already a human affiliate. And then to leave the scene, it hit nine cars as it was leaving the scene and not even getting reported. Nobody made the news or none of this shit, man. I'm not going nowhere until we get this straight. I promise you.
I will, I promise you that I'll be on the phone with the DA's office today.
And Mrs. Spence, I have a question. Did you say that there was a trial?
Yes.
And what was the verdict?
I don't even know because we never even got the sentencing hearing or any kind of report about. They never, they did the sentencing hearing without us. To be honest, they did the sentencing hearing without us. We have no idea how much time this man got or even if he even got... He could be out right now. I have no clue where the freak he is. And nobody's telling us nothing. And I feel like my family's in jeopardy. Is this not how you do, this is not how you do...
Mrs. Spence, give me your son's name again, please.
Artis Spence.
Artis?
Artis, F-H-J-T-I-F. And the guy that was charged with the crime is Teraz Armstrong.
And this is twenty-seventeen?
Yes, March eleventh.
All right.
I know it's behind schedule, but that's because they've been pushing me around and not hearing me. So I had to come to you in the higher ups because I can't do this by myself. I tried. And it's freaking driving me crazy, to the point where I want to do something.
I will, I will reach out to the DA's office today.
Yes, sir.
And then I'll make sure that they have your contact information so that they can do as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Just for the Facebook Live family, this Thursday, this Thursday will mark our second portion, or second half of our citywide cleanup. We are asking, we're asking the residents to join us and be supportive. There will be dumpsters on the west end of town this week, starting this Thursday, from Thursday to Monday. Dumpster will be made available for the residents to discard bulk trash and other materials. Please, no oils or paints. We're trying to, once again, continue our cleanup efforts here in the city. And want to thank Councilwoman West and her guys from the Streets Department who have done the yeoman's job in getting out there and getting ahead of bulk trash and making our city look good again. Lot better. Any other comments from the members of council?
I have a concern. Well, first of all, I'm still very happy with J.P. Mastauer's efforts towards getting our trash collected, regular trash, as well as recyclable items. But the problem that the vendor has been running into in some areas of the city is that the alleyways or the streets where refugees collected, some refugees collected on the front of your house and some is collected in the rear. For those of you where your trash is collected in the rear, I would appreciate that you don't park your cars there on trash day. You know your recycle days are always on Wednesdays and that's for everybody. And then depending upon where you live, your trash, your regular trash will be picked up either Monday, Tuesday, or Thursday, Friday. So on those days when your trash is to be collected, if you have rear pickup, I'm asking you to please not park your cars there. In some cases, we've had to have persons contacted or cars removed, and we don't want to do that. We don't want to do that. So please, help us out and not park your cars in the rear. Thank you.
Yes, I just wanted to make notice to the public that tomorrow, Thursday, October twenty-eighth, at two PM, we will be doing a Facebook Live meeting with mayors and members of council and members of the community to discuss the city's plans of the usage of the American Rescue Plan funding that we received. This money is intended for purposes of the community to try to uplift them and make them whole again from some of the struggles or obstacles that have, may have come to their front doorstep due to the COVID-19 pandemic. So tomorrow, we're just going to have a conversation with some members of the community, discuss our plans and pretty much open it up to the community to let us know, provide us with some ideas as well. And we'll try to see if there are some form of eligible uses of those monies and put those within the plan. So we'll educate, we'll provide some education on the do's and don'ts of the Act that has been put forth through the federal government. So, but again, that meeting is tomorrow. We'll have it on Facebook Live at two PM. You can see that flyer and that information on our social media platforms and websites as well. So please join us. You can make your comments through the chat via the live. And again, we will have some members here and to discuss some things on behalf of various faith-based communities or the business community, some residents, some nonprofits that has already spoke to us as well that will have us, that will join us within that conversation and be the voice for those areas within the City of Chester. So again, tomorrow, two PM. And you can join us through Facebook Live.
Thank you, Councilman. And we're excited about this opportunity to present to the community our ideas, along with their ideas of how we utilize this money in a positive way to help our city and our community move forward financially. And I want to applaud Councilman Morgan for all his work in the financial department in helping us put this together, along with Mr. Galante and Lisa Gaffney, those departments as well.
And we say that there are, the money is restricted. And there, you know, we can only spend it according to how the government allows us to spend it. So, you know, the money will not be dealt with in a frivolous manner, but we will be in accordance with the federal government.
Thank you. Hearing and seeing no one else at the mic, we now declare this council meeting adjourned. Have a great day.